You could have asked me to do that.
Who? I did.
Those little clothes in the hallway, I was right there.
Well, that's my grandson. He's having his first cookie down in Louisiana.
Call the Tuskegee Valley Local Board of Education meeting, November 15, 2021, in the Trojan Center to order. Please call to roll.
Mr. Gooding.
Present.
Mrs. Green.
Present.
Mrs. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Overton.
Present.
Mrs. Berger.
Present. For those of you that are guests or visiting, we do have agendas up on the table. Feel free to grab one. Other than that, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stand for the invocation by Mr. Gooding.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for this evening being a little bit cool, but Lord, it's that time of year. It's also that time of the year to be so thankful for all the blessings that you've given to us. In this Thanksgiving time, we just pray that families will be able to get together and break bread and remember all the good things that have happened to them. And Lord, tonight, though, we have some that some of those things are not as good. And so we lift up Susan Troyer and her family with the passing of her father. We just ask you would be with them. And also tonight, as we wear these T-shirts proudly, we pray for Mike Spielman. We just lift him up to you and ask a special blessing on him, Lord. I just pray for healing and we pray for his family. Now, Lord, as we do the business of the Tuskegee Valley School Board, we just thank you for all those that have come out. And we just pray tonight that we might do the work of the school board according to your will, and we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mr. Murphy, is there any additions or corrections on the agenda tonight?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number two, decorations. You can read on the agenda our mission statement and Board of Education goals. Number three, having no request for public participation, we'll move on to our agenda starting with item number four, which is our superintendent's report.
Okay, thanks, Mrs. Berger. Item A, under our superintendent's report, is to, of course, honor our High School Students of the Month, and we've got three incredible students here this evening with us. I think I see two, maybe all three. All three are here, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Phillips, our high school principal, to recognize and to introduce our High School Students of the Month.
All right, thank you. Just like you said, we have three great students again, and it's awesome, all three were able to make it tonight. So I'll first start off with our Athlete of the Month, so Connor. We got to stand right up in front so they can get pictures of us. So Connor is a senior. He is the son of Chad and Jen Gardner of Bolivar, and he was the Athlete of the Month for his efforts in golf, where he finished 35th representing Tuskegee Valley State Golf Tournament, so congratulations. At this time, Connor is undecided on his plans after graduation. I would assume it might have something to do with golf in some capacity, right? So congratulations. All right, next, I'll have Brandon come up. Brandon Wilson is also a senior, and he is our Student of the Month, and he is the son of Joel and Kimberly Wilson of Bolivar. He was nominated for this month's character trait of politeness, which is perfect for him. He really enjoys playing the guitar, art, hiking, and playing video games. And after he graduates, he is undecided if he's going to go to college or join the armed forces, possibly the Marines. Congratulations. And last but not least, Lauren Sequoia. Lauren is a freshman. Her parents are Chris and Sherri Sequoia of Bolivar, and she was nominated for her outstanding efforts in many things: speech, drama, choir. She's also a member of Hope Squad. And in addition to those things that she does, which I think she just spends the evenings here between speech and drama, she also finds time. She likes to watch Marvel movies, which is pretty interesting. After graduation, Mr. Gooding, just hold on for a second. Lauren wants to attend the University of Michigan and major in musical theater, hopes to pursue a career in acting, and at some point after graduation, she would like to travel to Ireland and Germany.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And on behalf of our board, and I'll give you all a moment if you'd like to recognize them, but on behalf of our board, Lauren, Brandon, Connor, hey, congratulations. Well done. You guys certainly deserve those awards. And one of the things I appreciate most about hearing Mr. Phillips introduce our Students of the Month is that I always, always learn something new about each and every one of you. So again, congratulations. Anything else that the board would like to share? I know, Mr. Gooding, you were called out there by Mr. Phillips, but...
I know I was. Congratulations, and I wish you the very best with that school up north. It's just during a couple weeks from now, then we don't think so highly of Michigan. Other than that, I'm sure it's a good university for what you want to go.
But truly, we are very, very happy for all of you. And to our parents, our parents of our Students of the Month, thank you for your constant love and support over all the years. It shows. It shows. Every time we get to introduce our Students of the Month, you represent your parents and your families very, very well, and you represent our school district very well. So well done. Item B, under the superintendent's report, I just wanted to give the opportunity to any of our board members, if they would like to, to share a highlight or something that you learned or something you were challenged by, by the most recent Ohio School Boards Association Capital Conference, which we were just all at, most of us were at, the seventh through the ninth. So just want to share that. And before you do, I want to congratulate publicly, once again, our Tuskegee Valley Board of Education was one of two boards of education across the state of Ohio that received the Board of Distinction Award. So congratulations to each of you individually, but also collectively to our Board of Education. So, yep, well done.
I'll go first. First of all, I'm going to talk about OSBA conference. I was in charge of the delegation. I wasn't in charge. I was the chosen one to go to delegation, and every school has a delegate that goes and votes on the legislative platform for the OSBA. And it was very contentious this year, and I used my school book club, our book club agenda, to help me get through that, and it really worked, so I appreciate that. We're going to put the book club on hold this month, and I just want to emphasize that we will cover what we, these two chapters that we did, and then the next two chapters in January for everyone because of the volume that we have to get through tonight. But I especially want to thank the board members that are not here tonight, Neil, Chalk, Scott, and Susan, for their leadership in helping us attain this, because even though we were the ones that received it, each of them provided quality leadership, and especially Mark and Mark for your examples of leadership and your role models. You helped us to want to be better. And I especially want to thank the OSBA because they challenge us to be a better board, and I really feel like what we did made us a better governing board for our district. So for each of you, thank you. And as far as Capital Conference, I always appreciate the opportunity of learning and growing at these sessions, and I attended a couple. One was with Dick about school leaders' life in negotiations, and the second one was about House Bill 70, which is the state taking over local schools and local control, state control, and giving and taking it away from the local control. And even though House Bill 10 got allowed the Youngstown, Lorraine, and East Cleveland, who have been under the state control, a way out, I want to emphasize that House Bill 70 is still on the books, and this school could still be taken over by the state if we ever met the requirements that they have set forth. So that's something that we always need to look to and watch to try to reform and get rid of. So those are my two.
Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay. First of all, during the trade show, I was so thankful that our architectural firm, Lesko, and David specifically took not only Fairless staff, but our staff around to look at furnishings. And unlike Fairless, that only had board members, we had our administrative team there, and I thought that was awesome, because it's you guys, along with the teachers, that are going to work together to be able to come up with the furnishings that will really do the best for our students in that new, in the new school. So I'm thankful that. My talks this year were mainly focused on legislative items. I am the legislative liaison. And the one talk I went to, there's 20-plus bills right now in the Senate and the House that have to do with school and school funding and all sorts of things. And what my concern is at times is that our legislators down in Columbus, and certainly everyone in Washington, D.C., just do not know what the real world is about. And I applaud Sally for being so active in the OSBA and keeping us apprised of many of those legislative items, and of course, our Superintendent Mark, who also, through BASSA and his work with the Appalachian Rural, I forget Coalition or close to that.
Yep, you're right. Coalition of Rural and Appalachian Schools. Yep.
Right. But they are there fighting for our schools and what we need. And one thing we were set up to do before we had to cancel because of the, of some business concerning the new school, is that the Hearts and Souls Initiative that the OSBA has put out, they would like all schools to get their legislature, both the representative and the senator, to come into their schools, not to attend a board meeting like tonight, but to come right into the schools to see what's happening, look in the classrooms, pay attention. And perhaps in that way, they might see what they vote for down there in Columbus, how it would affect our students and our teachers and our staff. So I think that's really good. And the last thing I wanted to mention was I did go to a talk on how COVID has affected schools in some of the negotiated agreement portions, and I just feel that we are so thankful for the teachers of this school and for the custodians of bus drivers and cooks. And through this timing and going forward, that we want to work together as a team in our negotiations and be able to do the best we all can in serving our students. And finally, in this divisive political environment in America today, it's important that we protect our students and our staff's rights to free speech in both the First and Fourteenth Amendments. And let me be very clear here, because I feel as a board, we do encourage parents to be involved in their children's education. If you want your kids to excel and be all that they can be, partner with us. The parents, the teachers, and the kids all working together is the greatest formula for success. So that was my comments from the board.
Thank you, Dick.
Rousing speech.
Thank you, Dick.
I'll just share that I attended, my focus this year was on just some of the things that our school, like, were struggling with, like, for example, bus drivers. There was a class on, like, how to retain bus drivers, how to get the help. We were shortage of that right now, all around, every school. Food services, there's some struggles there, and so I did, I attended a couple of those. And then I just wanted to educate myself a little bit more on the voucher program and how that's, would affect or can affect or is affecting everything. And so I got some ideas on, to bring back and share with the team, and hopefully we can move forward with all those shortages and make things better and figure it out.
Just got some good information with that.
Thanks, Amy.
I also attended a lot of sessions, and I think some of my focus were on the partnerships. So I think going into building our schools, there were a lot of good examples set by Shawnee State and North Adams for some teachers, and we also had Mount Vernon Nazarene College, as well as their local schools partnered, and they had some synergies that they could make. So I thought it was interesting to hear, given me some ideas and hopefully all of us some ideas that we could potentially partner some way, somehow, in the future with others. And then I also selfishly, but I guess in conjunction with Amy, focused on some HR. So when we are trying to attract talent, you know, what are some of the best practices in doing so? So I thought that was awesome, and I think something that was not mentioned by anybody, but beyond us learning a lot, we had the opportunity to really build relationships between all of ourselves, the admins, and then also other schools within the county. So I think that was probably my highlight of our trip.
That's great. That's great. Thank you, Katie. Ben, you were not able to be there, so hopefully in the future, we'll get you there. I appreciate the time and the commitment that our members of our administrative team and Mr. Phillips, it's just, you know, and as a board, it is good. You mentioned about the network and the opportunity to be together and to spend time together. There's always a sharpening going on, I sense. And I appreciate each of you reaching out to me or to Mark and to say, hey, have we thought about, would it be possible if? And just as you mentioned, Katie, learning from other Board of Education members throughout the state, that's what this conference allows and promotes. So we always want to just continue to get better and better here at Tuskegee Valley, and I appreciate it very, very much. I appreciate your time and commitment to spend three days there in Columbus away from your families and potentially away from work to be able to do that. Item C, under my report, is I'm thrilled to have Mr. Ryan Weller here on behalf of Hammond Construction, and Ryan volunteered every once in a while, and I really appreciate this, every once in a while to have his face rather than you here from me. It's good that our Board of Education and our community hears directly from the construction manager, and so Ryan is representing Hammond Construction tonight. So Ryan, if you'd be willing to just give us an update, give the board and our community an update on what's happening, what you see happening in the future.
Yep. Thanks for having me. So we have completed the early site work portion of the project. As you probably noticed, a lot of earth moving and some basic stormwater controls. So we have those in place. We are now starting on the building construction phase. There's actually a GMP amendment on the agenda tonight that is for the construction of the new middle high school. So we're currently working on putting in the access road around the east and north side of the site that will be used for construction of the new building and will eventually become the bus access road for both the new middle high and the PK six building. So we're working on putting that in, should have that paved by the end of the week, possibly even tomorrow if the weather cooperates with us. And we're also working on underground utilities, and we will be for the next couple of months. Water, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, new electric service, new phone service, all of those items are in progress. One of the things we're working very, focused on right now is relocating the electric service that currently runs overhead on power poles to the middle school. That gets rerouted underground, so then we can remove those power poles and continue with the site work. So that is planned, tentatively to switch over over Thanksgiving break. We need a little bit of cooperation from the power company, so that's not a hard date just yet, but that's our goal. And then we'll be moving into the actual building construction work, foundations and masonry walls, starting in March. So that's the plan with the middle high school. With the PK six project, we're, us and Lesko, the design team, we're now finishing up the schematic design phase of preconstruction and going to start getting into the design development phase.
Ryan, can I...
Ryan, can I have a question?
Yes, absolutely.
At one of our last meetings, you mentioned about fencing would be going up. When, is that going to be later? Once the construction would start, you'll have the fence up? Or are you going to do that sooner?
Sooner. If not this week, it'll be next week. The paving operation that we have planned kind of cuts off our access. So we can't really have anything else happening at the same time. So once we get the road paved, then we can start getting some other trades in. But we will have the site fenced in. I will tell you within the next two to three weeks.
So that's a safety means. So we don't want students or those moving out into that area?
Yep. Safety and security measure.
Okay.
Any other questions or? Okay. Ryan, thank you very much. We appreciate the work of Hammond and Lesko. It's a great team. You guys do a wonderful job. Item D is, the topic is called auditorium discussion. And I have done my best to just condense this one-page document to really just tell the story of the background of the project, the present reality where we find ourselves as it relates to an auditorium on the new seven through 12 building. And then hopefully, Lord willing, future plans. So I'm not going to read through line by line of this, but just overarching perspective. Really, this, this dream, well, there's been a dream. And it really started to come to fruition in 2017 with the introduction of the Rover Pipeline. And, and we made, you know, Mark and I, with our Board of Education, made a commitment very early on, if not just immediate, that if we realized that Tuscross Valley Local Schools would receive a penny from Rover Pipeline, that that penny would be invested into our future facilities. Because we had tried bond issues back in 2008 and 2009. And those, those were not successful. So we, and we want to continue to invest in our facilities and, and address those things. So the goal was to maximize Rover Pipeline dollars, construct a new seven through 12 middle high school, just as Mr. Hammond talked, or Mr. Hammond, Mr. Weller, from Hammond just talked about. As well then, as well as taking our existing middle school, transitioning that to a pre-K six with an addition. So renovation with an addition. The local share, 61%, state share, 39%. What that means is that those are the only two items that are co-funded on this project. Everything else is outside of that. But the vision is bigger than that. So back then in 2008, the board approved, in 2018, the board approved the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Master Plan. A key point, and the board is fully aware of this, the master plan that we approved in 2018 was based off of numbers developed in 2017, 2017 cost. At that point, in 2017, we thought that it would cost approximately $27 million, local share, to do items A and B under 2017. So we began, we continued with the planning. Then 2019, Rover, the Rover valuation was put out there. Rover put an appeal on that, and that will likely be held up in court. Mr. Phillips believes it'll, it'll be held up in court for years, more than likely years. What that has done, however, even the appeal process has resulted in a reduction of tax collections to the district to the tune of about $1 million annually. Then COVID hit, and we continue to deal with the complications of that. And that takes us further down into 2021. What I will also point out is, and I'd encourage you to circle the number, 27.5 million under item eight. Item eight says the Board of Education financed $27.5 million over a 30-year timeframe to cover, to pay for the local share, the local share, what we thought was going to be $27 million. We financed 27 and a half as a safeguard to provide a little bit of cushion there. Then 2021, we had a phenomenal groundbreaking ceremony in May. It was remarkable. I feel like once that happened, we just started hitting rock and hitting obstacles literally and figuratively. So lots of rock, rock blasting, soil remediation, lots of additional costs to the school district to, to take care of that. Then, as we keep moving through the summer, extreme circle, underline, all capitalized if you want to, extreme budget overtures. The estimates came in higher than what were anticipated. Bids came in higher than the estimates. As a result, the team continued to do what's called value engineering, which means what else can we do to simplify? How can we cut, remove, cut out? I have to be careful with how I think of that. I know it's a constructive process to value engineer. The goal was to reduce costs, but to not jeopardize functionality, to not jeopardize quality, to not jeopardize safety. But it did pull out a lot of elements in the entire project that we would have preferred to have included. So that's hard to do over and over and over again to value engineer. We're thankful, item 12, the budget, the state of Ohio through the OFCC recognized that COVID was complicating things and wrecking the budgets, that's my word, wrecking budgets, in terms of those school districts that were in the process, like we are, trying to move forward with the project. So as of this month, November, the OFCC is slated to approve a budget amendment. You approved it one month ago. Now, OFCC is slated to approve an 11.4% increase. That's an increase on the co-funded budget that was established in 2017. Keep in mind, we're about ready to enter 2022. And not one brick has been laid. So there's been a lot of complication through this process. What did that, what does that mean? The state is contributing approximately $2 million additional toward the project. The district is needing to kick in an additional $3 million. Construction, as Ryan mentioned, is slated to begin March of 2022. So here's the reality. So in addition to the district financing $27.5 million, the district is now responsible to commit or find, secure, whatever you want to put in there, an additional $4.5 million just to cover the budget shortfall for the new seven through 12 and the pre-K co-funded project. That $4.5 million extra does not include an auditorium. An auditorium, additional space for gymnasiums, additional thing, you know, stadiums, field houses, wrestling rooms, any of those kinds of things. That is not co-funded. The district has to pay 100% of that. We believe that an auditorium is an integral part of a facility. That being said, and as, as Mr. Weller alluded to, if construction and footers are slated to begin in March, what has to happen right now? Orders have to be placed. Materials have to be secured. And because an auditorium is, it's a key aspect of the building. So certain parts of that are built first, along with gym walls, et cetera. So you start with high, high, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm not explaining this probably very well, Ryan.
I heard it as high bay construction.
High bay construction. So high masonry, high steel. And then everything else connects off of that. Item three, under present reality, $4.9 million is what it would cost to construct an auditorium with the new seven through 12 building. Again, auditoriums are not co-funded, yet we believe they're valuable learning spaces for our students and communities. The district does not have $4.9 million extra to construct a new auditorium. We're stretching to fund the 4.5 extra just to move the project forward. So the district asked Hammond Construction, can you give us at least three options? What would it cost to build a new auditorium as it's designed? 4.9. What would it cost to build the auditorium if we value engineer it? Let's pull elements, pieces and parts away from the auditorium. Okay, that saves $200,000. Now, that's a big chunk of change. But compared to 4.9, dropping to 4.7, it's still a ton of money. Item C would be, well, what would it cost to construct the shell only? In other words, let's build the complete thing. Build the building and build the auditorium so that at least the building looks complete and is ready for the interior of the auditorium at a later time. Even the cost to build the roof, the walls, get it enclosed, all of those kinds of things would be approximately 3.5 million. Item six, the district does not have an additional 3.5 million. That resulted in, a couple of weeks ago, with the board's blessing, you helped me look at the draft of those kinds of things. And I put out a call for assistance. And just asking, basically casting the net. Here's the deal. Here's our challenge. Are there folks in our community that, that would want to pledge? Make a pledge, if you will, towards this. So what happened was, we've got, we received over that two-week timeframe, 84 people responded to the letter, responded and took the survey, if you will. Of those 84 people, there were 21 pledges. Of the 21 pledges, approximately 377,000. That 377,000 is really, if I break that down a bit, one, and these are simply pledges, one would be at approximately $250,000. Another pledge for approximately $100,000. And then several others, 19 others, at about $25,000. $377,000 does not build an auditorium. And yet, materials need to be ordered now. So what does that mean? And as the board knows, Mark knows, Ryan knows, everyone that has been in our core team meetings that meets every two weeks at least, this has been something that's been discussed. In my mind, I kept thinking, surely, the numbers will get better. The numbers will get better. I trust that, I trust the process. The numbers have not gotten better. And that being said, I don't see anything else that we can do short of a miracle. I really just can't see anything else to do other than moving forward, as Mr. Weller said, to construct the new seven through 12 building without an auditorium. And you'll notice that I put a comma for now. The reality is, even if we think that way and think hopefully someday we could add it on, because Lesko has designed the building, that it could be added on. But keep in mind, it is an integral part. Every, I'm not a builder. But whether it's wiring, plumbing, HVAC, all of those critical elements are a part. It will cost a lot more than $4.9 million to put an auditorium on later. But maybe that's, that's just for another time. Item two, what we will continue to do is pay the mortgage. That's a 30, it's a 30-year loan for that $27.5 million. We're going to use Rover Utility Tax Dollars to pay the mortgage. In addition to that, anything that we can do, seeking pledges, donations, grants, foundations, and if there's any more after paying the mortgage that we can devote towards, not just auditorium, but again, there is a comprehensive vision for our school district. And it is to, it is to relocate the bus garage over to the existing student parking area. It's to bring everything over to this side of the campus. And the stadium needs to be replaced. It just completely needs to be replaced. A field house, the concession stand. We have a huge concrete block building behind us. What, you know, there's a lot of things that we have to figure out what to do to bring, to bring everything to completion. And you can't, that's a big vision and it takes big dollars. And we want to steward the Rover Utility Tax Dollars well. I, you know, when we had a core team meeting last week, I was just asked, you know, Mark, can you, can you just? You're going to have to tell the story. You're going to have to, succinctly as possible, this is the best I can do, ladies and gentlemen. That's, and I'm, I trust that, I trust that it will work out. And I'm extremely, you know this, I'm disheartened. I'm disappointed. I've been extremely frustrated with a lot of the process, but it is what it is, and we're moving through it. I don't, there's no blame. It's just the situation. We've got a remarkable team with Hammond and Lesko and Sally and Dick and Mark and me that represent the board that sit at every single one of those meetings and, and folks from the state of Ohio. It's just been a really hard, it's been a very challenging process. But I'm, I'm, I, again, I say this all the time, I want to be as optimistic as I can be. I want to be hopeful. I want us to plan, because you know what? We, we are charged with doing everything we can to provide for our students and provide for the best high-quality education for our kids. And I'm sorry, I believe that our children need and deserve a full-fledged, state-of-the-art auditorium as attached to a building as every other district that's doing it or has done it. And I'm not, it's not about comparing. But these are our kids, and this is our community. I'm thankful for our small 1957 auditorium that was brought up to code back in 2017, 18. It was a challenge for us to raise $325,000 just to do that. And the board pitched in $80,000. So you know what? Kudos to the 21 people or businesses that said, Mr. Murphy, count me in. I'd be honored to contribute. Kudos to them. I'm going to ask that they, you know, they may read, they may read board minutes and think, I'm not going to give now. Why would I give now? It's not going to be going on. It's not going to be put on. I would just ask that people continue to support and trust us. That $377,000 pledge, I believe, is an accurate reflection of what our community can do. This is Tuscross Valley Local School District. This is not New Albany. It's not Worthington. And it's, you know, you understand the point. But kudos to those folks. So I'll stop. And I'd be glad to answer any questions if there's anybody else would like to comment. The board, I'm not asking. Mark and I are not giving a recommendation. There is no official board resolution. You don't need to make a decision. Really, what, what Mr. Weller, as, as the project manager for, for this project representing Hammond, what they're looking for is, Mark and Mark, are we supposed to order materials or not? And at this time, we're saying no. Because we can't. So anything else that the board would like to share?
You know me, I'm going to share a couple of things. So I apologize. But first thing I want to say is, I want to emphasize that we lost and are continuing to lose money because Rover is contesting the tax revenue. And because of that, that has made a deeply impacted what we can afford. Number two, when you co-work with the OFCC, we've learned a lot of things we didn't know before. But one of the main things is that you have to have your money upfront. So we have had to put the money upfront before they even started. So even if we may think we might have another million dollars down the road, if we don't have that money today, before we sign this agreement later on in the agenda, it cannot be added. So we had to remove $5.2 million of what we call LFIs. That means things that they, that we couldn't afford. We couldn't afford our part of that.
LFIs are locally funded initiatives, just so people know.
But they became LFIs. They were things that, some of the things were OFCC co-funded, but we couldn't come up with the money for our side, the 61%. So we had to cut those out of the budget. We've worked really hard. I just want to emphasize that the whole team has worked really hard. And we've gotten rid of $6.4 million of money, but we still had to come up with 4.5 over what we thought it was originally going to cost. So I just want to emphasize that we have been fiscally responsible with this money. I can't emphasize that enough. And we have tried to stretch the dollar as much as possible. And we appreciate Lesko and Hammond for everything they've done to try to help us get to that. But I think that's really important for you to understand as a community, that when you say 14, or when you say, when we say that we had to put in 4.5 more, it's not that we're building a Taj Mahal over there. It's, it's that we just have to meet rising costs. So I just want to emphasize that, Mark. That I think you, we have done a great job being fiscally responsible, but we just can help the times that we're living in right now. So I just want to say that.
Thank you.
I would also add, I think, from the feedback that I've been receiving from our community is that the auditorium needs to have a decision made because it's a part of the building. I would tell you, as Mark had stated, as Sally has stated, we still want it all. The dream is still there to have the athletic facilities The dream is still there to have the athletic facilities as well as the auditorium. So I just want to stress that also as a piece of it.
So unless you have other questions for me or anything that you want to share, that does conclude my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Moving on to item number five is new business and consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A.1 through 13?
Can I make that motion?
Is there a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mr. Gooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Item number six. Is there a motion to approve the five-year forecast?
Can I make that motion?
Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Phillips, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I mean, I'll just sort of restate some of what I put out in my memo. I look at the forecast to sort of tell our financial story, and the biggest story right now is we're in excellent financial position. That is contingent upon the community approving our emergency levies, the first of which will be up for renewal in May of '22, the second in May of '23. It's also contingent upon the fact that we stay on the state foundation funding guarantee. And again, it's attached to Rover and the appeal, and as long as they continue to pay at their 50% level, things will stay the same. If for some reason the appeal is settled and they pay below 50%, then again, that will have a negative impact on the forecast. But as things stand right now, we are on solid financial ground.
That's good. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Item number seven, is there a motion to approve the resolution approving GMP Amendment Number 1.3 to the construction manager at risk agreement and authorizing the board president and treasurer to sign that GMP amendment?
Are you going to read it or not?
I wasn't going to.
I move we accept.
Unless you want me to.
No, I just was asking, I wanted to know. I move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Mark, could you just explain what the GMP is? I know what it is, but just for the community, what does it mean that we're signing, since we said just because we're not doing anything?
So this is essentially, the Board of Education is approving the project to move forward at the next level, and really, it's the construction of the new 7th through 12th school at a cost not to exceed that $24.7 million. That's what's called the guaranteed maximum price, meaning anything that may go above that, if there's anything that goes above that, then Hammond Construction, as the construction manager at risk, assumes the risk, assumes the cost difference. If there's anything less than that, then it stays within the co-funded project. Key words being "co-funded." How's that, Mr. Phillips? Is that accurate? Anything else you'd want to add?
Yeah, the only thing that is not included in that GMP, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, is loose furnishings and casework will be a separate guaranteed maximum price that comes later.
The OSDM standard casework is in this GMP. The loose furnishings, you're correct, is not in this GMP. It will be a future GMP.
Thank you for explaining.
Thanks. Yep.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Gooden?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Item number eight, our leadership team reports submitted. Dr. Varansky, is there any additions that you'd like to add?
I just want to highlight two things quickly. We want to give a shout out to Dover Philly Credit Union. They had 11 of their employees volunteer their entire day to be with us today. We had all of our freshmen here at the high school participate. And basically, it's an activity where they have to think about... They receive like a fictitious job in their income, and then they go through life. And we talked to them about what do groceries cost, what happens if something breaks in your car. And so it was a little bit of just a reality check of, oh, that's why I can't have everything. So they really enjoyed that. It was neat to just watch their faces and see them, how they responded when something happened that didn't go their way. But I think it was a great experience. But we do want to give Dover Philly Credit Union a big shout out for helping us with that. The other item is our district-wide goals audit is taking place tomorrow. We have 12 administrators that will visit all core classrooms in the district. Of course, our principals will be taking a part of that, but we'll also have seven administrators from other districts and the ESC who will be in our classrooms. And the point of that is, way back in August, Mr. Murphy and I went over the district's master plan of everything we wanted to accomplish. This audit serves to check on the academic side of that. Are we doing everything in that master plan that... Yeah, the goals that we set we would do. So we're excited to have everybody here tomorrow and go through that and then debrief with them, and we look forward to seeing those results, and we'll continue to improve from there.
And I'm just sorry, I'm always talking, but I just want to give kudos to this idea because it brings other people in to look at our school district, but also then to give us feedback. And so, and I really appreciate that. I'm just really excited about this and look forward to hearing what you have and what you discover with this.
Thanks, Erica.
Mr. Phillips?
I don't anymore, because Dr. Varansky did a great job.
I'll put him at the bottom next time.
I was going to mention that part today that we had in the gym, but he did it. I'm good.
I'm glad that you guys are doing that, and I think that is a key thing for our students, having a son and now on his own, like learning those skills, and I think it's valuable for our students. Thank you.
I think the board would be pleased to know that as, you know, Dr. Varansky and I and Mrs. Bettis were spending time with these 11 employees from Dover Philly Credit Union. So I had them go around and introduce themselves and talk about their role and their title and what they do. And I also, we were asking questions about, well, what were your impressions? Were our students respectful, kind? Did they participate? Were they engaged? Oh, absolutely. Could you sense that some of them, many of them, had some semblance of background... Oh, yeah. Could you sense that there were some, maybe more that did, but a few that had no idea? They're like, oh, yeah, there were some that had no idea what they were doing in terms of how to spend money and how to make good decisions. But many of them ended up, as they went through life or went through a budget for a month, many of them, you could be pleased, many of them did have money at the end based on the decisions that they made.
My son did not.
So, yeah, it was great. Thanks.
Mrs. Knowles?
I just want to publicly thank Missy Uncles B. for putting in a lot of time to get our Veterans Day program going. We had a few less veterans in in the past, but we probably had over 20 veterans that showed up that hadn't even registered, and so it was really nice. We had a pretty full house. Our social studies teachers all worked hard with our kids to talk about Veterans Day, what it meant. They wrote poems, created posters and note cards, and they handed those to the veterans, and they really did appreciate having those. And some of our kids who wrote poems actually got up and spoke, so it was really neat that that came from them. I think one of the things I hear from our veterans the most is, this is so neat that it comes from the kids. It's not adults talking about Veterans Day, it's kids talking about Veterans Day. So just want to thank Missy and all the social studies teachers for all their help, and it was very nice. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica.
Mrs. Collins?
Can you clip maybe for Mrs. Knowles?
Yes.
Really, I just wanted to thank the community that came out to support the Veterans Day program at the intermediate. Mrs. Sessker puts a lot of work into preparing the students for their songs. And if you were there, I got choked up. It's so hard to listen to kids say the pledge or sing the National Anthem without feeling moved about what we do every day in a school setting. So I appreciated having visitors back in the building. I know it's been limited, so there will be just certain times of the year that we kind of open up the doors for that. But they were very appreciative to be back in the school, to see kids and know that the kids still respect the community and what they've done for us in America. So I really appreciate that opportunity to have that.
Very good.
Thanks, Andrea.
I know Mark got the opportunity to be there, and I got to be there as a mom, as a granddaughter of a veteran, and a participant of the assembly, and it was phenomenal. Mrs. Sessker absolutely, she sang the National Anthem by herself, and it's fabulous. She had the students singing, and I know my daughter at home just practicing it was fabulous. So, you know, we couldn't say so many good things about it. I know it made my grandfather's day, and I think it made a lot of those Veterans Days.
Good.
Mr. Murphy, is there anything? I know that the grounds has reported. Is there anything new that we need to add?
No. No, I don't think so at this time. Thank you.
Announcements, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held December 13, 2021, 7:00 p.m. here in the Tuskegee Valley High School Trojan Center. The board will hold a special meeting prior at 5:00 p.m. to consider appointment of public employee or official. And then we will have in January our organizational meeting being held on Tuesday, January 11, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., immediately followed by the regular board meeting here again in the Trojan Center. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Please call roll.
Mr. Gooden?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Overton?
Yes.
Mrs. Berger?
Yes. This meeting has officially been adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.